Good evening and welcome to the July 19, 2023 Regular Meeting of the Gates County Board of Commissioners. I am Dr. Anthony Riddick, the 2023 Chair of the Board. I am joined this afternoon and this evening by Commissioner Jonathan Craddock, Vice Chair, Commissioner Linda Hoffler, Commissioner Brian Roundtree, County Manager Scott Sauer, County Attorney Mr. Philip Godwin, Clerk to the Board Julie Chastnut, and Commissioner Emily Truman is excused from this meeting. The implication and pledge of allegiance will be led by Vice Chancellor Craddock. No stand.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father God, we come to you first of all to give you thanks. Thank you for this day that you have made, and let us rejoice and be glad. Father God, we lift up the families that have been dealing with tragedy over the past couple of weeks. We lift them up to you, and we know we don't always understand why things happen, but we lean on you. Father God, we ask you coming to this heist tonight as we settle down to conduct county business. Father God, let us see clearly and make the best decisions for this county and most of all the citizens. We ask all these things in the name above all names. Your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have seen the agenda. I ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Resolution Honoring Retirement Presentation. Mr. Freeman, you come forth, please. Sheriff Campbell, come forth, please. Let's take to the podium. Come on, Phil. I guess I'm going to read. Upon the recommendation of the Gates County Sheriff is to desire to have the Gates County Board of Commissioners recognize and honor a deceased or retired Deputy Sheriff for their honorable and dedicated services. For many law enforcement officers, their badge and service pistol or revolver have special meaning and significance. Attached this of this resolution from the Gates County Board of Commissioners recognizing and honoring retired Captain Ray Freeman III of Gates County Sheriff Office after 11 years of meritorious service to Gates County Government. This resolution shall be entered into the minutes of the Gates County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to Ray Freeman III. It states, whereas Ray Freeman III, Captain of Gates County Sheriff Office, retired June 10, 2023, after 11 years of meritorious service to Gates County Government. Whereas Ray Freeman III has been a sworn officer for 54 years. Whereas Gates County is committed to provide responsive and efficient services that support and advance the development of our community's educational, recreational, and economic prosperity. And whereas Ray Freeman III has consistently supported this commitment by working each day to oversee that minute, that minute details, and execute it timely, efficiently, and with professionalism. And whereas during his tenure with Gates County, Ray Freeman III has served the public with fairness, ingenuity, and dedication. And whereas Gates County wishes to honor Ray Freeman III for his service to the citizens in the capacity of holding the rank of captain with the Gates County Sheriff Office, a two-term member of the county's Board of Commissioners, including a stint as Chairman, President of the Gates Volunteer Fire Department, President of the Gates Ruption Club, and Chairman of Gates County Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors. And whereas Gates County wishes to honor Ray Freeman III in his home county of Gates for his service to the citizens of this great county, and thus express gratitude to Ray Freeman III for his accomplishments and invaluable contributions toward providing the highest level of service to support an active, dynamic, and thriving community. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Gates County Board of Commissioners do hereby extend our sincere and grateful appreciation to Ray Freeman III for his dedicated services to Gates County. Our congratulations on a well-earned retirement, and our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health in the years to come. Be it further resolved that this resolution adopted this date, this 19th day of July 2023, shall be entered into the minutes of Gates County Board of Commissioners and a copy presented to Ray Freeman III.
Riddick, and it is with great honor that I'm able to present you.
Yes, sir.
He's taught me a great deal.
This is your service weapon, and that's 180%.
I know that when I turned it in, he examined it closely to see if there was any. And he wanted to see how many times I've fired. County rise of ambition as well. Thank you, Sheriff. And thank you, Madam Chair.
Normally, I come up here, we're arguing about the budget. Thank y'all for the budget for this year. But what I'd like to present you with is your retired badge and ID.
Thank you, Chief.
Something you've earned 50 years.
Sir.
Not too many people can say that, but from us, from the office.
And being as young as well.
Yes, sir. As young as you are. This is a little memento we wanted to give you. It says, presented to Captain Ray Freeman. Thank you for many years of dedicated service. May the years of your retirement be rich, rewarding, kind, and full of happiness. Gates County Sheriff's Office, May 31 of 2023.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Sheriff.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Freeman, I know you have a few words for us.
Well, I probably said too many words in this establishment many times, but I have certainly appreciated all the citizens of Gates County, most certainly the Commissioners, because I know what you do, bless your heart, County Manager, even our County Attorney, and I've known him a long time. I feel like he's older than I, but he doesn't feel that way. But certainly the Sheriff, his leadership, appreciate coming on to the Gates County Sheriff's Office. Never had a clue that when I moved back to Gates County that I would be involved in law enforcement again after serving in other places. So subsequently, what a joy that's been to me, and seeing the citizens and getting to know the citizens of Gates County that I thought I knew, some of them are very good, some of them are very bad. Fortunately, the Sheriff's Office is putting them away. Maybe they will not come back and see us again. However, certainly been my pleasure and an honor to serve Gates County, so thank you so much.
Thank you. And before all of you fine young men take your seat, we want to picture with the Commissioners for all time sake. So let's come on, Commissioner, and the County Attorney, County Manager.
Julie, thank you for putting up with me through various times, and I must thank our IS personnel here who has lent me his glasses when I have either been without them or could not find them during the Commissioners' meeting. So thank you, Warren.
Thank you. Now I ask for a motion to approve this resolution.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And also, Mr. Freeman, we'll get a copy of the resolution signed by all the Commissioners. He will not get it tonight. We need to get Commissioner Truman's signature on that resolution, doing all the Commissioner's signatures there. So as soon as we do that, and the Board Clerk will make sure that he receives a copy of Next on the agenda is new hire, Mr. Sauer, William Billy Tutwiler, Interim Emergency Management Director.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Jason Sample resigned about 30 days ago. He was transitioning to a new position in Pasquotank County. Within the public service realm, he was known as EM1. EM2 has been Mr. Billy Tutwiler for the last couple of years in a part-time role, and he has been working on his training, his certifications as a Fire Prevention Code Inspector, and we are asking him to serve in an interim capacity as EM1 for the next several months, at least maybe get us through hurricane season. I told him he would be evaluated on whether or not we have any severe weather this fall. Mr. Tutwiler, you want me to just come up and let everybody see you? We're really fortunate to have someone of his skill set and availability serving with us here in Gates County.
Okay. Mr. Tutwiler, you have any comments?
It's just my pleasure to be here and do whatever I can do to help.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, I'm going to ask Mr. Chris Hill and Ms. Taylor Fisher to come to the podium, please. Mr. Chris Hill is also leaving us. In case you didn't know, he's going to Chawan County, I believe.
That's correct. I'd like to introduce Taylor Fisher. She's going to be our new interim tax administrator effective next Wednesday, June 26. Taylor's been with the Tax Office for about four years, has done a great job for us, and I think she'll continue to do a great job as our interim tax administrator. I'd like you to welcome Taylor Fisher.
Ms. Fisher, come to the mic. Introduce the Commissioners.
I'm sorry, what was it?
Have something to say?
Just thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to working with y'all.
Okay. It is recommended the Board makes the following appointment, that Taylor Fisher be appointed interim tax administrator to become effective at 8:00 a.m. on Thursday, July 27, 2023, and the Board of Commissioners authorizes the Clerk to the Board to swear her in as interim tax administrator on July 26 at 5:00. I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
If improper motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
You can't get away from us now. Thank you.
And she lives in Core Peak?
She lives in Core Peak. Homegrown. Okay. That's even better. Thank you. And Chris, before you leave the podium, we want to just on behalf of the Commissioners to thank you for your years of service and how you've handled yourself and the staff and the tax administration in Gates County. So we are going to miss you, but not that much, because Taylor's stepping in.
That's right.
And you assured me, and the Vice Chair, I mean Vice Chair, that you would come back if we needed any help. If Taylor needs help, we going to call.
That's right.
Taylor's going to call.
That's right. Thank you all for everything that you've done for me and for your support over the last four years. I appreciate everything, and like I said, if you need anything, I'm right across the line.
All right. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Chris, sir.
Before you Commissioners, you have the consent agenda. It was in your packet. If there are no questions or concerns, I ask or request a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'm motioning to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second that motion.
If improper motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Madam Clerk, are there anyone signed up for public comment?
Mr. David Forsyth, he would like to speak on Merchant Commerce Center and Board of Elections.
Good evening. I'm Dave Forsyth. I've been up here before. I'm from Core Peak, live at 37 Desert Road. I just wanted to come up. It's been several months, I guess April was the last time I saw something or heard something outright concerning the Commerce Park Merchant Center, whatever it is, the famous piece of land. I attended a public input session that seemed more like a marketing session to me where one of the Commissioners was there along with advocates of this board to argue about how important the housing portion of that was. It has come across to me and others that it seems like a red, well, maybe not red herring, Trojan horse of this project to be to get a housing section in there. Many of us are not opposed to public housing, public-supported housing, any other term you want to call, but that's not the right location for it. Input that was given that day seemed to be clearly there, but there were three advocates arguing against those points. Haven't heard anything much since then. I did attend the rodeo, working as a volunteer for one of the fundraising groups out there. I spoke to the Summit Engineering guys out there. At the conclusion of it, after watching their booth, I went over and talked to them, and I was the only person to talk to them the entire evening there. They got no comments. I've heard nothing more about comments that are being given from the public, heard no characterization of it. Months of silence implies to me that perhaps we're trying to characterize or frame what comments we have to get the results that we want, to make it come forward as, yes, the public's all for this, when I don't believe that's to be the case. And so, again, silence on the line implies to the public something's going on and we're being kept out of it. And again, it seems like a marketing ploy to some of us, if we're wrong, so be it. But Commissioner Roundtree spoke at the time and said, oh, there's box store interested in it. I challenged him to share with us. It's been many months since then, that there's really this big box store that supposedly is wanting to come here, where it's further follow-up, you know, if it's something we're pushing for, at some point, stuff becomes public available. Nothing seems to be becoming public available. It's difficult for some of us to just accept that this is all being done in good faith. Treat us respectfully, do what we want. And I'll now transition to another subject. I'd say that's reinforced by the recent behavior of the purge of the Board of Elections by the Democratic Party, that is, the advocates and also key to this board going forward, when that Board of Elections seemed to oppose being forced out of a building, to vacate it, to turn it over to supposedly being a cultural center icon or magnet for our community, which likely not going to happen, as I've mentioned before, I don't think that can really be the case. The value of the building, restoration of it, taking care of that as a historical monument unequivocally should happen, but when a board opposes the move of that so the building can be turned over to friends of leadership, it comes across clearly, if you oppose it, we get rid of you. And that seems like what's just happened to our Board of Elections, the Democratic Party purging the people on there, off of there, is the way it comes across to me. So I just wanted to voice my discontent on my behalf, but on others as well, as the appearance of things that are going on. Thank you.
Anyone else?
No, ma'am.
Old Business Gates County Center Facility Assessment Report. Mr. Sauer.
Madam Chair, members of the Board, last week, or last meeting, the Board received the printed report, and Architect Michael Solero is here this evening to walk us through that report in detail. And this report is available online, and we welcome Michael to be with us. We've also asked for representation from the Board of Education, since they operate the Gates Community Center, and he's got a lot of good information to share. Welcome.
Thank you, and good evening.
Good evening.
For those who don't know me, I'm Michael Solero. I'm Principal Architect with Summit Design, and we were retained to evaluate the community center for particularly the building envelope evaluation, which consisted of the exterior walls, the interior walls, and the roofing, the condition that they're in, and provide some evaluation and analysis of that. This is a summary of the report. As the County Manager mentioned, the full encompassing report is available, but today I just wanted to discuss some of the high-level overview of the findings that we discovered. We made a visit to the site on May 1st, evaluating, like I mentioned, the exterior of the building, the interior face walls, as well as the roof. And in doing so, we also inspected for both asbestos and lead to determine whether or not either of those were present. And you can continue forward. So the executive summary is just kind of a synopsis of our result and findings. The rest of the report is the more detailed analysis, but essentially, through our analysis, as well as review of existing drawings, the building was constructed in about the 1970s, and it appeared that in roughly 2011, a new roof was added on top of the existing roof, which may have been failing at that time. As of today, and as of late of this report, the entire roof system is failing. There are active leaks throughout multiple parts of the building, within the gymnasium and multiple areas within the space. It is suspected that the overroof of the old roof with the new one in 2011 was not fully completed, which is causing water to get within seams and then ultimately inside of the building, which could result in further damages besides just water, mold, mildew. So essentially, you know, the entire roof system is failing. It is beyond its life. At this point, we would effectively say that the roof is essentially the original roof, since the re-roof in 2011 was just simply applied on top of it. So at this point, the roof is definitely past its lifetime. As far as the building envelope, the walls of the building, they are definitely inadequate based on construction types of the 1970s to actually prevent water from not coming into the building. Technical aspect, the wall is a CMU block and a brick. There's no layer that actually prevents water from coming in, so anytime it rains, water is actually going through the materials and coming into the building. That is evident through, we did remove a couple of bricks to see there's nothing behind there protecting it, but also more evidently for those who are actually attending the building on a regular basis, you can see the paint on the interior walls kind of falling off or bubbling in cases that is actual evidence of water behind the wall pushing the paint off and eventually cracking it. So multiple signs that water is coming through, and the report talks more about the details that are actually not within that system that is actually supposed to prevent water from coming into the building. Lastly, as far as asbestos and lead is concerned, there is asbestos present in the roof, particularly the existing roof, and that is why we believe that it was probably re-roofed at the time, partially to save on some money. You are able to cover up lead, sorry, asbestos with a re-roof. If you do not remove it, it is okay to remain, but at this point with its lifeline, it is definitely failing. It would need to be removed, so precautions for asbestos removal would need to be done. And then we did test for lead, and fortunately, none of the tests indicated sufficient lead beyond what is the normal limit by OSHA, so we don't suspect that there's any lead within the building. So that's kind of the high-level overview. As you kind of flip through some of the slides, you can start to see some of the photos of the space, areas where there's high moisture content in the walls. Fortunately, this visit was performed the day after a major rainstorm, which is actually the most ideal time to do this, so we can detect, has it dried out? Walls of this nature are supposed to allow water to come in, it's just that systems are supposed to let them leave, and because of the nature of the building, it is not actually letting it leave, so water is staying in that wall and therefore coming into the building. There's definitely deteriorating wood around windows, caulk and sealants that are actually finishing that window system or deteriorating, so again, opportunities for gaps to come in for water intrusion throughout several parts of the building. And as I mentioned, there were two active leaks at the time, now this was the day after the rain, that it was actively leaking within the building, one in the gymnasium and one in the common area during that visit. From there, that was our ultimate evaluation. A few recommendations that we can give as far as possible next steps. The first and foremost would be to resolve the issues at hand as of right now, which is definitely need a new roof on the building. That is your first line of defense from rain and weather. We would recommend at the very least a re-roof entirely, stripping down everything to the metal decking, and then possible repair of any decking that is now exposed through that re-roof to determine if structural components need to be repaired. With that, it can be done independently of the exterior wall system, as if it is known that it is done independently, the way the roof system will go on top, they would attach it at the ends, knowing that the exterior walls will come out at a later point. But again, similarly, because the exterior walls are bringing water into the building, some type of system to prevent that as well. A few recommendations would be completely removing all the brick and putting in new material. You can completely remove all the brick, put the layer of water protection, and put all the brick back. You can also remove all the brick and put a brick-like pattern that, from the aesthetic and historic nature of a building like this, is still retained, but it has the modern-day technologies that actually prevent water from coming out. And then, of course, last and foremost, stripping all the paint that is dripping on the interiors of the walls and putting an actual applied coating that should prevent water from coming in is that final layer. I would say the last thing, we have not reviewed any of the mechanical, electrical, or plumbing systems of the facility. This is specifically for the roofing and the exterior walls, based on knowledge of water intrusion, but just from our evaluations and being there, we can suspect that they're probably past their life, and an evaluation of those would probably be wise. However, we would recommend fixing the roof and the walls before replacement of the mechanical systems, because it's like I've told many people, you can replace your mechanical system, but if your windows are open, your air is going to leave. Close the windows first, then replace your system if it's still failing.
Mr. Sauer, you have any questions, since you've been looking at this more than we have?
If you would, please describe for the Board the segments of the roof, how it's not just one even plane.
Sure. If you actually want to go a couple more slides, we got three more forward. We should have, yeah, one more. Actually, one more after this. So this is the floor plan, and this is your roof plan. So based on the nature of the building and how it's laid out, the roof is actually in four different vertical segments, so this is not one continuous roof across the entire plane of your building. The big rectangular square box to the left is over your gymnasium area. That is one independent roof section that then has vertical walls that tie to your middle section, which is where your side entrance is, some of your office, your back-of-house stuff, your restrooms. And then, the last portion on this plan, on the right-hand side, there is a longer rectangular on the top part, which is another roof section, and then the bottom rectangular square is elevated of that. So there are actually four independent roof sections. They're all made up of the same original roof, they're all made up of the same re-roof, but there are wall transitions between the two, and part of that would include not just the roofing system, but how it ties to the wall with proper flashing, again, to prevent water that is sitting on the roof to get into that wall section. Other things that were noticed is your gutter systems that are on the building, which are great for removing water, clogged with debris, leaves, tennis balls, just normal debris. Routine maintenance of cleaning those out so that water can properly leave the building would be beneficial. Fortunately- Fortunately, the lower portion after it comes down the gutter and goes out on the site is pretty good, so it's just a matter of clearing out those actual gutters to get the water down off the building and out.
Any other questions from the Commissioners?
Have you given any thought to a project estimate for the roof?
As far as total cost to replace it? Something of the, so the total building is around 16,000 square feet. We have not done a formal pricing estimate for this specific project, but of a similar project that we did in High Point, North Carolina, of a 23,000-square-foot building of similar nature, the re-roof of that, now that did include more mechanical stuff, was upwards to a million dollars of repair for a full strip down to decking, and it would mean new insulation and new roofing with carpet covers and wall-to-roof transitions.
What was that figure again?
Just shy of a million.
Michael, I have a question. So, if I understand correctly, it's not an option to have a veneer out of exterior wall. All bricks must be removed. Is that correct?
To get the most benefit out of it, removing all of the brick would be your best option. The most long-term maintenance-free option is not ultimately the biggest necessity, particularly areas where it's around windows, doors, openings, louvers, wherever you see brick that is projecting from other brick are creating horizontal shelf for water to literally sit on it, which you've got those vertical pilaster-looking things around the main gymnasium area. If you look at the top of them, there's no flashing. It's basically a piece of metal that is angled so that water sits on top of it, sheds off of the building. There's none of that, so it's literally sitting as a horizontal shelf, a table, so when water sits there, it just sits there and will eventually get into your building. So, that's your biggest long-term maintenance. There is, like I said, from a reskining of a building, you can go to the more laborious, remove all the brick, put the water barrier system on, put all the flashings that are needed, and put all the brick back. That is the most preservative of a building of this type, but there are also other systems that are thinner brick that have an integrated drainage system, so when water gets in, it is flushing it out. From a visual appearance, someone driving by, walking by, going up to it, you would have no idea that it was different. That's the best part of the modern science of it. It's just that it actually performs better than the current system as it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
And there was lead, but it was a minute level?
Yes, so according to OSHA, there is a specific threshold of how much lead is considered deadly, for lack of a better term?
Per minute.
Yeah. There is lead in a lot of things. It's just after a certain point, it's considered hazardous, and in your case, in all the areas that we have tested, and in those four plans that are actually represented here are all the areas that both asbestos and lead were taken, and then there's a large report that explains all of it. There is none that is above that threshold to consider lead as a hazardous material in this building, which is consistent with the year the building was built. Lead was banned in, I believe, 68, 67 or 68, and the building being built in 1970s would suspect that it wasn't lead anywhere. There are a couple buildings after that time, you know, lead was still in paint on shelves that people were selling, even though it was banned, but because of the year of the building, that's why the year of the building is the most important. That's why we're not seeing any lead.
And if you would, could you talk about the next step in the engagement proposal that you had presented to the county?
Sure.
So, we know where we're headed?
So, the next step that we recommended was, as I had mentioned, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and code compliance evaluation. That would kind of round out full building evaluation of all aspects of a building. This is the most critical from a water intrusion. That's why we started with this. Second would be failing mechanical systems, ventilation, heating, all your electrical panels up to date, you know, lighting, LEDs, fluorescents, stuff like that, just reviewing that, providing an analysis, and saying, hey, this is what you've got. These are what we're seeing. Similar to the roof, we may determine that the mechanical systems are beyond their lifeline, and it would be recommended to remove and replace them. It may be that there's more air leakage, and we need to address that, so that is also determined. Then there's, you know, code compliance with accessibility, standard building code compliance. That is a little bit more particular if you're going to make any other renovations to a building of this type that is not a pure remove and replace of a system per se. If you were to, you know, to remove the roof and replace the roof, does not trigger any of those events where you'd have to bring the building up to modern code, but other reconfigurations of a space would. So, knowing what impacts you currently have with modern codes may give you better recommendations on what you do and do not do with the building in its future.
So, if we go with the re-roofing right, take it down all the way to the decking, replace the decking that needs to be replaced, then reinstall a new roof, make sure all gutters are cleaned or replaced, how much of the water infiltration do you think that would mitigate?
You'll save, most of it's coming from your roof.
Most of it's coming from?
Yes, especially having active leaks when it's not actively raining outside is a clear evidence of that. Your exterior walls, while they let water in, because of the nature of the material that they're constructed of, it is a slower process than there's actual gaps that is letting water come in. Brick and CMU block, which is what the walls are porous, so they will absorb water. It's their innate material to do that, so if there's no barrier that actually prevents it, it will come in. So, talking about hurricane season, if it's raining constantly, constant, constant, the brick and masonry is constantly wet, the sun's not coming out to really dry it out, it will go through.
Situation.
And it appeared at some point in the past that the paint that was put onto the exterior walls on the interior was probably a band-aid solution to prevent water from coming in, but again, it's just a solution that's temporary. It's not going to last very long, and that's why you're seeing the peeling paint, and more particularly, where you see bubbling, that is actually water behind it. You can pop it, and sometimes you'll see water come out if it's active. Otherwise, it just pushed it out, the water evaporated, and now it's still bubbling.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
What's your recommendation for the next steps after hearing all we've heard? And I'm asking Commissioner Craddock, because he works in the field, and so does Commissioner Roundtree. He has experience in that as well.
Well, my recommendation, after listening to this report and reading over the report, well, the first step is fixing the roof.
Mm-hmm.
That's where a majority of our water infiltration is coming from, so that would be the first step. Now, if we can think far enough ahead, and we need to explore our options, how to tie the roof into the sidewalls for later updates, or go ahead and look into the option of newer flashing, gutter systems to remove the water shed from that roof. So, my recommendation would be to go ahead and start, I won't say bidding out, but looking at a new roof, so we can go ahead and get that underway. I know we have some money allocated for it, and I know we're going to be asking for more money from our legislators, so, but I would recommend we go ahead and move forward with the roof and getting...
And I should recommend or remind the board that the county has made requests to the legislature for special appropriations to address this situation. Of course, the legislative session is extended a little bit longer than anticipated, so hopefully there will be some relief to offset some of the costs for this.
One last thing. I don't know the specific name or the deadline of it, but there are public grants available for asbestos removal that I would recommend someone looking into and probably applying for. I do know that I've worked on other projects where they've got, where public grants were issued where they would actually remove asbestos. I think that's one of the benefits of actually having a report like this showing that there's asbestos, that this could be used as supplement to that grant application to help with funding.
We will follow up with you on that.
All right. I need a motion from someone as far as next step, so we can get it in a minute. Commissioner Craddock?
Yeah, I will make a motion to move forward with the next step of replacement of our Gates County Community Center roof.
I second the motion.
And properly motion is second, all in favor?
Aha.
As have it. That's the next step. And Mr. Salarra, County Manager, we request that you look into these public grants for asbestos removal and bring that back in front of the board as soon as we can, so we can move forward. And I would like to say also that we were in conversation with EVMA Commission today, and there's a pre-application due on Friday, and the project is the community center, and we're requesting $3 million. I said we're going to get it, but if you don't ask, you aren't going to get it anyway. So, we're just everywhere we can look for dollars, we're looking for dollars. Somebody's going to fund something. So, we did that today, and that's going in on Friday, and Mr. Salarra, we had the, we got the draft today on his email and my email. We'll be looking at that overnight and get back with them. But our EVMA Commission is our council of government, and they help us tremendously with writing grants and finding funding, and we're glad for that, and I think that's part of the Southeastern Crescent. That's new, and people are getting used to hearing that word or that term, so if there are any other questions, we thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time. Have a great evening.
You'll be hearing from us. Okay. Next on the agenda is broadband update. Mr. Arnold Bright. Mr. Bright is our chairperson of the Broadband Committee in Discount, and he was in Raleigh on Monday at 3:00.
Yes, I was. I was in the hot seat, literally.
And you wear it well.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. Reddick, board members, I will give you a somewhat of a synopsis of the Monday meeting. Thanks to the North Carolina Farm Bureau Federation and the North Carolina Soybean Council, we convened a group of stakeholders in the low-hanging cable world, so to speak. It was very interesting. We had a total of 30 participants in that meeting, and it ranged from the Roanoke Corporation, AT&amp;T, North Carolina State Extension, North Carolina Department of Transportation, North Carolina Rural Center, North Carolina Broadband, North Carolina Department of Agriculture. We had the number-two man in Department of Agriculture there, the one and two positions of North Carolina Department of Information Technology, North Carolina Electric Co-ops, Charter Spectrum, Duke Energy, Farm Bureau, Gates County, myself, NC Electric Co-ops, Roanoke Electric, 5A, Electric Cities, Soybean Council, and some more from the Farm Bureau Federation, so it was a pretty versed group of stakeholders there. And the first little bit of it, it was a little, I'll say, defensive from some that were there, but the most interesting thing that was brought to our attention was from Larry Sanders, and he is in charge of all the right-ofways for utilities in the state of North Carolina. North Carolina has given utilities blanket to do whatever they want to. Whether it's water, telephone company, any utility, they go through his office, and there's a blanket permit to do what needs to be done, and it's kind of different than most people would think. Different roads, different types of roads have different right-ofways, anywhere from 30 feet from the center or ditch bank to ditch bank on either side, so many feet under the ditch, so many feet above the ditch. It's kind of a lot of things in there, and that includes power lines. Power lines in their right-ofway should be no lower than 18 feet, 24 feet, depending on where it crosses, no lower, crossing a road or a bridge at 13 feet 10 inches for road heights, and there's some problems with that, that now that they've been introduced to what they have is antiquated, so to speak. We had one manufacturer state that his equipment is no higher than 13 foot 4 inches, but they forgot to state that that was traveling on a low buoy going somewhere to be put together, and that was John Deere. So, we all know they're a whole lot higher than 13 feet 8 inches and 13 feet 4 inches, so it looks like 18 feet 8 inches is a working height on a lot of farm equipment, and you notice I said that they could be as low as 13 feet, they can be as low as 12 feet, and across the driveway, they can be as low as 9 feet. So, there's no way a 13-foot combine is going to fit under any of this, so it's presenting a problem. Every Roanoke Connect has committed to replace their poles and do what they need to do to get it right. They'll either bore, plow, or whatever to make it happen on fields and farmers, and, you know, Donald Marshall Cherry wanted to make sure that we understand that it's going to be a process. They don't have enough contractors, enough fiber, enough stuff right now to do to change all of them, but they're going to do what they can. With that being said, there's another crazy law, statute that's on the books that, since we started this ball rolling in Gates County, they would like our help. There's a statute that states in North Carolina, anybody that tears anything down that's, their height is over 12 foot 6 inches, is responsible for the replacement and repair thereof. So, if you've got something that's over 12 foot high, you tear something down in North Carolina right now, it's your ball of wax to get it fixed. And they would like our help with our local representatives and with the North Carolina Farm Bureau Federation Soybean Group to introduce legislation to do away with that and bring our state statutes up to standard of at least 19 to 20 feet for crossings. That's kind of what they're looking at, but they've asked Gates County to help start that, and the sooner the better. That's what they, what they're looking for. Another interesting part of that is, is that when they are plowing on the right-ofway or boarding on the right-ofway, anybody can come on the edge of a farm or somebody's yard and plow and do anything in that right-ofway. So, if anybody asks about that, well, why is somebody plowing or direction boarding to my yard? They can. Now, if something is not placed back right or done like it should be, then there are going to be, there's going to be a central number, we don't know where yet, to call to report this, and it will be dealt with through the state. It'll be come back to whoever's doing the work, maybe pole numbers, address numbers, contractor's name, but there will be shortly something put in place to help us with that. I will, I've gotten several letters, and some of them, I can't put in a lot of detail on them right now, because they start out with a lawyer and end with a lawyer, which is kind of, what can I say? But I have one little thing from the Federal Communications Commission, and it's addressed to the providers. It starts with rural opportunity fund winners, and it names Gates County, and the FCC Universal Fund Funding Program allows USFF not to ignore or violate any state law in the fulfillment of its federal program obligations. To the extent of any RDO support recipient has violated a state or local law regarding the height of lines in the fulfillment of their program, their program public interest obligations, the state or the localities to which work has been done and how it's been done shall refer it to its local law enforcement to address the violations. Now, the kicker to that, there are no laws to support that. North Carolina has nothing on the books to enforce that violation unless it comes local. Now, if they're not fulfilling that to meet their funds to get paid, that's the obligation that they can come back through the Department of Information Technology, and the Federal Communications Commission said they will withhold their funds. I got a letter on that today. So, they're not going to play anymore from this point on with the money. It would, they estimate... It would, they estimate in North Carolina alone, it would take almost a billion dollars to replace all the poles that need replacing. And I can honestly say, EM1's back there still, they're all hoping for a hurricane to come through, tear them down, so, you know, put them back up by the federal government, but that's kind of how it is on that. So from this point on too, the North Carolina Soybean Federation asked, and I sent an email to Dr. Riddick, and I think she forwarded it to her county manager, that they would like for all their county boards to replicate that letter, a resolution, and send it to wherever you send them to. They're looking for that, and he'll, once he gets it, he'll get it to the Soybean Growers' Association and to the North Carolina Farm Bureau. And I was surprised at the backing that the North Carolina Farm Bureau Federation has, they've got some power, and they're behind us 100% on that. Plus, supporting everybody in the rural communities in the whole state with broadband, because broadband equals more ways for farmers to sell their products, get their products marketed, small businesses in the farming communities, so that's where they're really pushing broadband. And from the mountain, from the coast to Murphy, it's, they're in it with us 100%. And I have sent locations to the FCC, and they will be followed up on this week, 18 locations so far that haven't been corrected yet, but don't look for them to be corrected. Now, Roanoke Connect has obligated itself at the meeting, they're gonna correct theirs, but right now, they are not gonna go on a farm across planet, they're not gonna knock down anybody's cotton or anybody's corn, if they can work around it, that would be nice, and then in the fall, next spring, they'll replace those poles. And if they can't do that, they will get by, but their goal right now is to get as many subscribers connected as they can with what's up here right now. Because it was, here's the money, let's go, and that's kind of what happened. If there's a question, I can answer.
I just want to thank you for what you've been doing since last fall, when you were appointed to lead this discharge, and I was teasing him last weekend, we were talking about him going to Raleigh, you know, like, Erna's going to Raleigh, and I said, now, Erna, you watch what you say.
I was met by the attorney of the North Carolina Farm Bureau at the start.
She told you too, watch what you say, but he did a good job in his reporting when he returned, and yes, we're gonna, the board is gonna ask the county manager to work with Erna on that letter and that support, and our representative to get their language right as far as getting that to Raleigh as soon as possible.
And Ms. Chestnut has already sent that.
Right, good.
Yeah, I think he probably would have that already.
And also, anything else that Erna and the group feel that Gates County needs to do as far as resolution, you know, resolutions, anything like that, we want to get that done sooner than later, so that we can get this ball rolling, and we are so thankful for your passion. Erna rides around this county, almost continues, I think she loves it, and he talks that language, and they respect him, and I got a couple of calls, they respect you in Raleigh, they know who Erna Bright is now.
Yeah, and I met their attorney first, too. But they, all the utilities in the state of North Carolina now didn't realize this, didn't realize it's a problem, and how much it interfered with, and with the soybean association there, how much money that they could lose, and then the cotton, a couple of those guys also raised cotton, and he brought up, you know, I have five miles of roadfront footage, and I've got cotton four rows over, how much money they were losing, and it kind of brought light to the issue for us. It's gonna be interesting, there will be eight locations that we will look at coming up, that have been brought to me by citizens, and some are here present tonight, about low driveway crossings, they can be nine feet by the same statute, so we've got to get that changed, but I've got pictures, and we're working on those, too.
I don't think we post your reports that you give us, or you give me about where they are and the issues, what they've done, what they're not done, I think it'd be beneficial if we kind of posted on our website, so they can see if you live on Salem Road, it'll be up there what they're doing, where they are, so that it don't bombard you with questions, and they can still call you, of course.
I'll call them.
Yeah, but we can get that posted on our website, Ms. Chestnut with Erna, and so they can keep up with where the providers are in their neighborhood, and then if they have an issue or concern or sort of, they can call Erna, and he'll check on it and see if he can get it correct, and I think that's an efficient way of using what we have to use, you know.
And right now, Roanoke, well, 5A, however you say it, is working hard to have aerial fiber, and they're gonna bore fiber in places on 158, and they're heading 30 feet south, they've got Core Peak, Roanoke City area is pretty much taken care of now, 13, they've got a couple of issues out there, they've got a couple of issues in Europe that they're working on, and they'll be corrected. They have a timeline, but I don't think I'll put that out right yet, as to what they want to do and how soon. Spectrum, the same way, they're plowing and they're splicing as well, and both companies said now's the time, if you submitted your, I would like it, now's the time to submit, I want it. So go to their websites and sign up, and the only thing I will say to do is read the fine print, everybody's offering what appears to be the same, but it might not be, might be a package you don't need, you know, look at it and read it real close and go from there.
And I thank you again, and during the update session of the Commissioners' Vice Chair, Credit will be giving an update on next step as far as cap, he's gonna explain that to the citizens, so they understand what's coming, what we're getting ready to do, so thank you again, and next time you go to Raleigh, remember, watch what you say.
Watch what I say.
Thank you, Erna.
Yeah, give him a hand.
That's what you call a true volunteer, I love it. New business, vehicle and leasing program presentation, Mr. Sauer, introduce Mr. Devin Moore and Ms. Chrissy Hunt of Enterprise Fleet Management.
Thank you, well, come on up, folks, they are here to help us kick off the initiative that the board approved in the budget to transition to leasing vehicles, and we're gonna start with the Sheriff's Office, he's spent quite a bit of time with his staff and their team, and these two folks are some of the most talented vehicle leasing folks are gonna find. Chrissy, we've known for many, many years, Devin has joined the team and has come to know Gates County really well, so.
Okay. So I appreciate everybody's time allowing us to be here and kind of walking you through this. I put together a slideshow that I'm gonna kind of run through in the interest of time relatively quick, but if you have any questions, please stop and just ask, so if you can go to the next page, sir. So first off, a lot of people ask us who we currently work with, these are just a few of the clients that we've worked with throughout the state of North Carolina, we have a little more than 80, I think that number is closer to 90, pushing 100, current municipalities throughout the state of North Carolina, Rocky Mount, Chrissy actually just partnered with them in March, the County of Grandville just partnered with us earlier this month. The biggest number I'd like to draw your eyes to is at the bottom right, it says 99% client retention, so what that proves is with our partnership, that marriage between municipalities and our partnership really goes well, so the majority of our clients typically stay with us in the government space, whether it's city, towns, or counties, and that number is similar countrywide as well. So a few things that we learned with our meetings with the Sheriff, Scott, and William himself, we learned a little bit about how you all are currently owning and operating your fleet, you're buying off of local contracts, you're outsourcing your maintenance, which means you're going to local shops to get your maintenance done on the vehicles, the resale aspect, you're going to govdeals.com to sell the vehicles, which we'll talk about how that differs with us and the benefits of that. The fleet was around 52 vehicles, the Sheriff's Department had the majority of the vehicles, they were looking for more Durangos to implement into their fleet, because as everybody knows, the manufacturers are no longer making the chargers and sedans for pursuit vehicles, everybody has SUVs now, so Dodge has a Durango, Chevy has the Tahoe, Ford has their Explorer, there will be no more sedan, so we kind of have to go to an SUV when it comes to the pursuit-type vehicles. The key goal is that we kind of identified is to lower the overall age and mileage and the cost to maintain that fleet of vehicles, provide recommendations and proactive plans each year going into the budget season, and when the manufacturers are opening their ordering banks, increase fleet safety and equity, which will play into the financial aspect, if you have more equity in your fleet, it doesn't take as much when it comes to replace vehicles, which we'll talk about in a sec, and then provide a stable year-over-year budget, so with our website and our ability to track every dollar spent, it's gonna help the county track what the fleet is spending each year, year in and year out, it's gonna help us and you all budget a little bit better with replacement and keeping that fleet a little bit healthier, okay? So, this is our Will of Services, so everything up here, the county is currently doing, you have to buy the vehicles, you have to fund the vehicle some way, you have to put fuel in them and maintain them with maintenance and then resell them, so everything on this will the county is currently doing, but we have the capacity to help out in every aspect of this as well.
Yeah, a couple of things that I wanted to speak about here is acquisition, so we will purchase off of state contract or sheriff's contract, so the pricing is the same, so you're not paying more by partnering with Enterprise. The good thing is, is that we can find the vehicles for you, so finding vehicles over the past two or three years has been very, very difficult. I'll give you an example, recently, the city of Rocky Mount came on board with us, and we've been able to locate 150 vehicles for them, and they could not even locate 50 prior to that. So we do have a network of dealers that are willing to honor contract pricing, and if we have to look outside of those dealers, then we can satisfy the state by getting multiple bids. So it's good when you have a partner like that, that you can lean on to find vehicles.
You go to the next page, sir. So first off, this is how we, this is the foundation of how we identify the correct holding period of a vehicle, so the majority of city, towns, and counties that partner with us typically buy a vehicle and then they hold it for 10-plus years. With our way and how we look at it, is we identify the correct holding pattern of when to hold a vehicle and then get rid of it. So if you follow the lines, that orange line is when you buy a vehicle, you run it until it's 10 to 15 years old or has 150-plus thousand miles and it's not worth much. While you're holding that vehicle that long, your maintenance and fuel goes the exact opposite way. Older vehicles are gonna have higher dollar repairs, that fuel degradation starts to get worse and worse. A lot of people don't realize that one miles per gallon less per year, with you going around 10,000 to 15,000 miles, adds up to around $500 to $700 in just fuel, because you got one miles per gallon less that you're running. So if we can have newer fleet, newer vehicles in the fleet is gonna help out with all those operating costs. So if we can hit that circle at the right time with the right vehicles, we're gonna ultimately sell those vehicles at the right time and get equity back in the fleet, replace that with a newer vehicle, with essentially down payment, because we sold that vehicle for $10,000, $15,000, but then your operating expense is gonna start over. So if we do that correctly in the right time and enough time, we're gonna slowly but surely shrink the overall cost to own and operate the fleet of vehicles, but you're also gonna have newer vehicles in your fleet.
Let me give you a quick example here, so Onslow County partnered with us about four or five years ago, and they got 26 pickup trucks from us, so about 20 months into the partnership, I met with them and said, you need to replace these 26 trucks, and they were confused, they're like, but these are new trucks, but you have a ton of equity in these vehicles. So when we delivered those trucks to them 20 months prior, their payments were around $550 to $600, so I said, if you sell these trucks now, and we replace these trucks with new vehicles, your new payment's gonna be $250. So you're drastically reducing your next payments by rolling the equity into a new vehicle. So when you get new vehicles, you don't have much maintenance, you have, you know, oil changes, tire rotations, and maybe brakes and tires, so that's definitely a benefit of rolling the equity, because you're not running the vehicle for 10 to 15 years and then selling it for $200 to $300. We sold those vehicles for $30,000, and they paid 22 for them, excuse me, yeah, 22 for them.
And so Chrissy's job is to look at what the market is doing throughout the year. We actually have a gentleman, his name is Jason, who works in Charlotte, who monitors the used car market literally daily, that is, his sole job is to monitor that. So in cases of what Chrissy is talking about, if we do see there's a spike for a certain vehicle in your fleet, we're gonna come to you with all of the information and data and say, hey, it might be financially better for you to go ahead and sell these and replace them because of X, Y, and Z reasons. So our job is to take as much of this off of your plate when it comes to operating the fleet, so you all can operate the county like you need to, okay? Next page, please. So this is a little bit about how we acquire vehicles, so to Chrissy's point, we can buy vehicles off of state and sheriff's contracts. We typically like to factory order vehicles, so that we can get the vehicle spec exactly how you all would like them. So instead of getting, going to a dealer and all they have is an F-150 with a sunroof, we don't quite need that, so if we can factory order vehicles, we can get them exactly how you like it. The other option is what Chrissy was talking about, going through our dealer network of dealers who honor these state contracts and buy vehicles for you all on your behalf. The bottom line is, you all will not have to do the searching for these vehicles for yourselves, we will do all of that searching for you, and as we meet with you all three to four times a year and understand what you all, what types of vehicles you need, we'll have that understanding, so when it's time to order vehicles, we know exactly what the county needs in their fleet. When it comes to aftermarket equipment for your sheriff's vehicles, we spoke with Scott and William and the sheriff, we are able to use your vendors within the county to outfit these vehicles for you, okay? So when we order a vehicle for you, we will get that vehicle delivered straight to that aftermarket vendor, get the aftermarket equipment outfitted with it, get the signs and everything on it, so ultimately, when it gets to your parking lot, it's ready to go. That old driver gets, the driver gets out of the old vehicle, hops in a new vehicle and gets back to work. And then, when it comes to selling the next, when it comes to selling that vehicle, we have a ton of people designated to just selling these vehicles. So we are also part of Enterprise Rental Cars that everybody knows, they own 200, they own 2 million vehicles in the rental car side. We have throughout the country over 650,000 vehicles leased to Enterprise Fleet Management. So we have that many vehicles, we have to be efficient when it comes to selling these vehicles. So once again, when that new vehicle lands, that driver gets out the old one, hops in the new one, you all email us and say, hey, this old vehicle's ready to be picked up, we'll get it picked up and off to one of our lots, and then we're gonna sell it to the highest bidder. So instead of going to govdeals.com and getting whatever we can get, we will have representation to either the auction or straight back to dealers to get the most money for it. So one part about this that's so great when it comes to government clients is because you all do such low mileage. So to Chrissy's point, when it comes to these pickup trucks, if we can sell these vehicles at 50,000 or 60,000 miles, we can sell it back to a direct dealer, okay? But because it has so many low miles on it, that dealer can sell it as a pre-owned vehicle, which means we can get more for that money, which, I mean, for that vehicle, which means the county gets more for that vehicle, and then we're gonna cut down that payment for the new vehicle, and you got a new truck back in the fleet. So our job is gonna make things very, very simple when it comes to selling your older vehicles for you, okay? When it comes to operating the fleet, we have a few products that we suggest starting the partnership with, so we have two different maintenance programs, one of them is our full maintenance management program that we will put on anything that's newly leased through us outside of your sheriff's vehicles. So any new pickup truck or SUV that you get leased through us will go on our full maintenance management program. Now, what that does for you all is we're able to fix the maintenance cost into the lease payment. So to make it real simple, if we know you're gonna have this vehicle for four years up to 60,000 miles, we know what the maintenance cost for that vehicle should be, we're just gonna break it up over those 48 months and fix it until lease payment. What that means for you all when it comes to a budgeting standpoint is you know exactly what that vehicle's gonna cost outside of fuel for those years coming up, makes it real simple to budget for those vehicles. Everything that you currently own, we will put on our maintenance management program, which is just a pass-through program. So if it goes to the shop, oil changes, $80 to $100, we will pay the shop, and then you will see that on the invoice at the end of the month. So what that is gonna do is consolidate your billing when it comes to the maintenance, and everything will be housed on our customer website for you all to see at any time. The shops, we will, we have confirmed that there's a few shops that's already on our network that are in the county for you all to use, I think they're using a few of them now, so the process for your drivers will still be very much the same. What we will do is we will help monitor the repairs, the repair cost, making do is we will help monitor the repairs, the repair cost, making sure the vehicle gets what it needs at the right mileage point, so you all don't have to be experts when it comes to the maintenance game. We have a team designated to that, so when it goes to the shop, they will call our national service department. We will make sure the repair costs are the same, are correct when it comes to labor and parts. They will make sure that the vehicle is getting what it needs at the correct mileage, the driver's back on the road and back to doing his job.
This data is so important because depending on how much money you're spending on maintenance, we may make a recommendation for you to replace a newer vehicle versus an older one because you're having too many maintenance issues. So, just having that data at your fingertips is very, very important, especially for us when it comes time to make recommendations on when to replace vehicles.
When it comes to fuel, we partner with WEX. It's just a fuel car. They go to any pump they need to, put the mileage in, put their VIN number in, so we know who's getting gas and just fill up. Once again, to Chrissy's point, the data that we're getting from that fuel car is essential because if we have updated mileage, we have an idea of what that vehicle's gonna sell at, which means it may or may not be an indicator to sell that vehicle at a certain time. Also, it's gonna help you track what the fuel for that, for the entire fleet, all the way down to individual vehicles is doing at any given time. You can pull it up whenever you want to and see exactly what the fleet has spent on, what the fleet has spent when it comes to fuel up to that point throughout the year, that month, that day, that week, whatever you wanna look at. So, yeah, those two, we would suggest starting with right away so we can start tracking all of this data and helping you all maintain and control these costs and give you more visibility as to what the entire fleet is spending. Thank you, thank you. So, one thing when it comes to funding these vehicles, okay? We use our open-ended equity lease when it comes to funding vehicles. So, a lot of people hear lease and they kinda get scared about the word leasing. This is not a traditional dealership lease where you have mileage restrictions and wear and tear penalties. This gives you all the flexibility and freedom as if you paid it with cash. The reason we use our open-ended equity lease is because it gives the county cash flow savings for us to implement this program and get vehicles, get newer vehicles in the fleet without necessarily spending more money. So, versus you all going and buying one of these new Durango's for $43,000, we're gonna pay that $43,000, lease it to you, so that first year, those first few years, you're gonna come out spending less, but you're getting more vehicles, which will ultimately impact the operating expense. So, as we do that, these first few years is gonna be a cash flow savings as we implement the program. But then, you're gonna have newer vehicles, your operating expenses are gonna come down, and then when it starts time to sell these vehicles that we got leased to you, we're gonna start capturing a lot of equity to roll over into these newer vehicles. So, ultimately, as we implement this program, it's gonna be a cash flow savings for the first few years, then as it's fully implemented, it'll be a hard dollar savings just moving forward as we have everything leased through us.
So, there are no over-mileage fees for the lease and there's no wear and tear. So, these are just like they were your vehicles. So, let's just say two or three years inside of the lease, you're like, "We no longer need this vehicle. We need to sell it." Let's just say you owe us $15,000. We're gonna sell it, let's just say we sell it for $17,000. We take the $15,000 that you owe us and then you get the other $2,000. So, there will not be any wear and tear or mileage restrictions. The other thing that I wanted to mention is that these are your vehicles. So, let's just say, and this isn't gonna happen, because if it does, it's my fault. So, but let's just say, this program is not working out for you three or four years down the road, and you're like, "But all these vehicles are with Enterprise. We can't leave them. They don't because all of our vehicles are through Enterprise." These are your vehicles. So, if you don't wanna partner with us anymore, just the next vehicle that you get's just not gonna be through Enterprise. You're gonna continue making those payments until they're paid off and then they're yours. So, it's not like you're stuck. We want you to partner with us because we are a good partner and it makes sense for the county, not because you have to.
Yep. To her point, Chrissy's job is to make sure you all stay happy.
I do manage about 20 other government clients and the program has been really successful. Hurty County was the first county to partner with us, and that was about eight years ago, but we've had a lot of success over the past years with government.
Yep. And this is just a little bit about how this first year of the partnership is gonna go. So, we understand that a fleet is a very, what's a good word, complicated-
Hands-on.
Yep. Aspect to manage. So, it's gonna be a lot of touch points that we will have with you all, with every department head, the county manager, William, to make sure that you all are comfortable with us. We learn you all as well as you all are learning us as to what the best way to communicate, what you all like when it comes to vehicles throughout the first year. And then, every year after that, we're gonna meet with you all three to four times a year, making sure we're giving you all recommendations, information, data, things that we're seeing in the market, what the manufacturers are doing for the year coming up, all, every bit of information that you need to make the best decision when it comes to owning and operating your fleet. And then, as we come up with a plan, you say go and then we'll execute that plan. So, I wanted to keep it short. I know that was a lot. We did a lot of talking. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, I have a question. What's the average retention for a vehicle, a new vehicle?
Like, how long do we typically keep it in the fleet?
Right. So, it depends. So, sheriff's vehicles, we typically like to keep a little bit shorter because they're gonna be driving faster, braking harsher, and it's gonna be more wear and tear on that vehicle. There's no penalty for it, but it's just gonna be driven different than a regular pickup truck. So, we'll keep those a little bit shorter cycles, three to four years for the most part. Pickup trucks, once again, it kinda depends. We typically will put them on a five-year term because the mileage that you all are doing are low, and the truck at five years with low mileage is still gonna bring very good resale at the end of it.
But don't be surprised if I say at year two, it's time to cycle that truck because you're gonna make $20,000 on this vehicle.
Exactly.
So, it really depends on the market, how much you pay for the vehicle, what can we get a replacement with, what type of outfit is on the vehicle. So, there's just so many different variables.
Yep. And once again, that's our job to give you all that information. One thing that is coming back is manufacturers are starting to give back government incentives. So, once again, to Chrissy's point, if we did get you all a truck this year, but next year that manufacturer said, "Hey, we're gonna give governments a $5,000 incentive," we may tell you, "Hey, I know you just got this 10 months ago, but it might be time to go ahead and sell it because of these reasons." So, our job is to arm you all with all of that information. So, this, this will not be the last time you see Chrissy or me. We're gonna have a ton of conversations year in and year out about every bit of your fleet.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
If a car or truck is totally annihilated for some reason, how does that play in?
So, you all still have your own insurance. So, if, the process would still be similar to what you're doing now. So, if a vehicle did get totaled, you would just file a claim with your insurance, capture what the insurance gave back for you. You would contact Chrissy right away so that we can hurry up and get you a replacement.
Yeah. No, that was my same question.
I would like Sheriff Campbell to come to the podium and give us his take. I understand you've been working with him in his department, and he's smiling, I think.
I'm thrilled with the presentation and to be able to have the opportunity to do this because it is a pure pain to hunt down vehicles. We went through this two or three times, and looking for vehicles takes two, three months to try to find what you want and get them. And for them to do the shopping and bring the vehicles to us, that's wonderful. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I'm all for it.
That's what I wanted to hear.
I'm all for it.
Okay. All right. I saw that wink. Any other comments, Mr. Sauer?
Well, we've spent a lot of time with, with the sheriff and the Enterprise team. William and I have met with the county attorney a couple of times to review the master lease agreement and the various documents. And what we are asking for this evening is, is a motion to be approved for the finance officer to go through all the steps necessary to engage this team and start the process rolling and try to get some new vehicles on the road. And we're looking at eight vehicles in the first year for the sheriff's office. The only other vehicle that we had planned for this year would be a four-by-four pickup truck in emergency management, but we're gonna shoot to get the law enforcement vehicles taken care of first.
Okay. Do I have a motion on the floor?
I'll make a motion that we move forward with Enterprise Fleet Management for our sheriff's department vehicles, well, our county vehicles. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we're just about done, is water system update. Mr. Sauer?
Well, I've asked Brad, the tag team, with me on this to kick it off with discussions about the meter replacement project. The board approved that contract at the last meeting, and, and then to talk a little bit about the fluoride monitoring and testing and community reports that I know have generated some discussion in Gates County.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Madam Chair and members of the board. To start off with, I'll just give a brief update on the meters. We have gotten a contract. The contract has been signed and the PO has been written and all hand-delivered to the solidated pipe. As of Thursday of last week, I believe, the meters have been ordered. First initial conversation we had, they said within, we should be, they should be able to get their meters in their warehouse within 45 days. Conversation Thursday, they said it could be as early as 30 days. So, the project may run along a little quicker than first anticipated. So, I guess, all other updates on the water system, you know, we've been fixing leaks and doing taps. I mean, the normal routine stuff, we're still catching up on those. That's about all I have to say on the update as far as how we're coming along, but I do want to touch on the fluoride because I think that's kind of a hot topic right now. For probably, I'm guessing, about the past 20 years, all the customers have been notified about high fluoride levels, but they've just been notified in a different way. It's been added in the consumer confidence report, you know, every year. This year, I touched base with the state and they said we can no longer do that. We have to send it out in the billings. So, that caused a little bit of alarm because nobody's ever seen that before, you know, as far as the billing goes. But according to the EPA, we have to do a public notice of anything over 2 milligrams per liter. Right now, currently, we're at 2.6 milligrams per liter, which the biggest side effect for that is kids and children under the age of nine, it may discolor their teeth and may weaken their teeth a little bit. So, that is the biggest side effects. To give a little bit of history about fluoride, fluoride is, it naturally occurs in water. It's in all water, varying degrees from non-detectable or just above non-detectable up to 12 parts per million. It comes from rocks and sediments. It comes from fluorine, and as the groundwater moves through the aquifer, it, you know, drops some and it enters into the water system. So, that's where fluoride comes from. There are two, two or three ways to get it out. The biggest way, I guess, the best way is reverse osmosis. Reverse osmosis is a very expensive system. It's millions and millions of dollars to do. And you can also, there's other things, aluminum, alumium, or a distill, distilled process, either one of those. But activated charcoal does not take fluoride out. I got this from, it was on the EPA website from wellcare.com. I can hand a, I have a copy of this. I can make more copies if y'all want to get it to look it up, you know?
So, you said charcoal does not?
Activated charcoal does not take fluoride out.
So, unless you have a reverse osmosis-
Right.
-filter or system on your house-
Right.
-a household system will not remove.
That's right.
That's pretty much it unless y'all have any other question on fluoride that you might wanna ask.
Is it posted anywhere else, like county website or?
I think it is.
It's posted on the website and I have it posted across the road at the billing clerk's. Obviously, it's in the window.
I think it triggered a lot of people's attention, notifying them through billing, which I, is great. They need, they need to know it. So, I do, thank you.
And it is, a copy of the public notice is in the drinking report. It was added there also.
Brad, but this is not the first time that we've had chloride above the 2.0 per liter. I've been on this board a long time or several, and we've had it before and we've, the people have always been notified, maybe not in the billing.
Correct.
Right.
And so, it's not, you know, it's not, it happens. We have a very good water here for the most part, and every locality around here, you're going to find chloride because it's a natural product.
That's correct. And I also, also read just another little tidbit. Fluoride levels rise and increase on the amount of rainfall you have also. So, if you have a drier year, your fluoride is gonna be a little higher.
And how often do we, is that tested?
We test every, every three years.
Every three years?
Every three years.
Any other questions with Brad?
I do, I have one more question. So, as far as the meters, is there a plan where to start? Or to start at point A and just move across the county, or is it gonna be different stages?
To give the easiest answer, I have it in my head, but I don't have it on paper yet.
Okay, okay.
But we're, we're gonna work with consolidated. Once they get the meters in, we're gonna have like a, kinda like a pre-construction meeting, and I'll have, we're gonna do it by, by routes. I would like to get all, you know, all the broken meters fixed first, but they're spread all across the county. They're on different, it's just a nightmare trying to keep up with everything. So, we're just gonna get, probably, probably go in order. We have six routes, one through six. I may just start with one and just work, we work them all in.
Seven is pretty much.
Yeah, zones or routes.
Any other questions or comments with Brad?
Item next, there's been a parallel conversation about the fluoride in the water and the fact that there have been water rates adjusted by the county in, in recent months. And the issue that's brought the most discussion to my desk in my voicemail is the additional five cents per 1,000 gallons when a consumer uses in excess of 8,000 gallons in that two month period. And I'll be the first to admit that the bi-monthly metering and billing cycle that we have in Gates County is unique because most every other utility does it on a monthly basis. But nonetheless, we have, have prepared a worksheet that we're gonna put on the website. We've got copies we can hand out to, to literally walk, and we've had customers come in and try to explain to us that we've been miscalculating their bill based on their understanding of the rules, their understanding of the rate structure. So, we have laid this out so that we can walk through for customers that in a, in a two-month period, the base rate is $29. And with that $29 charge, that's for your first 2,000, up to 2,000 gallons of usage. So, if you only use 1,000 gallons in a two month period, you're still gonna pay $29. It's gonna be really rare that you only use 1,000 gallons. They say the average household uses 5,000 in, in Gates. I think it's a little bit less than that. But nonetheless, our structure is such that up to 2,000- But nonetheless, our structure is such that up to 2,000 gallons in a two-month period, the bill is $29. For every 1,000 gallons consumed, up to 8,000 gallons, the bill is $5 per thousand. So if you happen to, if you just walk down through the chart, at your house, if you use 3,000 gallons, your bill's going to be $34. If you use 4,000 gallons, it'll be $39. 5,000 gallons, $44. 6,000, $49. 7,000, $54. 8,000, $59. If you use in excess of 8,000 gallons in that two-month period, the rate goes from $5 per thousand to $5.05. And again, the reasoning for that is that there is a rating structure in the state of North Carolina when they are approving grants and funds for updating our infrastructure, building the new water tank, expanding our well capacity. And they give points for a water consumption rate, excuse me, water conservation rate. So we tried, instead of burdening the customers with a large conservation rate, to go as minimally as we could, and we went with a nickel. So for those gallons, at 9,000, you add $5.05 to 6,405, to 10,000 gallons, 6,910, and so forth. And last week, I saw the most wonderful thing happen. We had a customer who I talked to a couple of times on the phone, asked for a chance to sit down and talk, and wanted to walk through the billing for their household water consumption. I had, gosh, what's Daphne's last name?
Walker.
Daphne Walker, our financial services supervisor who works with the collections folks across the street. And Daphne came in and the three of us walked through the entire thing together, looked at the customer's bill, and again, the customer was pretty adamant that we were incorrectly billing, and we were debating over 10 cents, because the customer's meter read 10,000 gallons. And the question was, did they owe $69 or $69.10? By the end of the meeting, Daphne and the customer hugged each other and realized, everybody understood the calculation and that the calculation was being correctly applied, using our financial software overseen by the finance office, as approved by the governing body. And we will take whatever steps necessary to try to explain the rate structure, to outline the rationale, to have the conservation rate, so that we can qualify for better grants, better loan financing. And we will publish our little cheat sheet on the website and give out copies. But it really is, at times, difficult to explain, because we do things here, and this is really on a temporary, I think the board determined, emergency basis, because we've got 1,000 water meters that aren't measuring correctly or not measuring at all. I think the phones will really ring when those new meters get in the ground and folks that have been just paying $29 finally realize, oh, gosh, you mean I'm using $10,000 a month or $11,000, and now my bill's $74.15? Well, again, once the new meters are in place and everything's tested, we will go back to a monthly meter reading and monthly billing step. But I just hope the governing body understands, we try to be transparent, we try to take time to listen to the customers, the staff in the finance office who meet with the customers face-to-face, spend a lot of time on the telephone, in person, and Brad and his crew just do a tremendous job as well. So please know that we are doing our best to explain that things are changing. And with the fluoride, we are being much more forthright and transparent and putting that information in their water bills, so that they've got something to look at and say, oh, gosh, fluoride. And I would think if anyone feels at all concerned, they should discuss it with their healthcare professional, or the health department, or maybe their dentist. But in this part of the world, in northeastern North Carolina, our groundwater is great. We, when you look at the water wars they have in California and Arizona and Texas, we are blessed with an abundance of groundwater and it is really, really high-quality groundwater. So we're retooling the system, we're rebuilding where we can, and we just ask your patience, but we will explain the process all the way through for whatever it takes.
How hard would it be to get this put in a bill?
Oh, we could do that real easily.
Yeah, I think it would be, it's very self-explanatory, I think it would.
We can do that.
I think it would be good to have this shipped out. Hopefully, it won't cause anymore issues, but it explains everything. It's like you said, it's a cheat sheet. So if we could get this tonight to the public in the next, not next, or whenever it's feasible, I think that would be some good information.
One other thing, we should be hearing from Mr. Tarrant in the next couple of days about whether we got the grant or not. So I've been waiting.
I've been waiting. We have all been waiting.
I've been talking to him, so I don't know if he's avoiding me or just hanging me out there, but that's all I have.
Thank you, Brad. Any other comments? Thank you, Brad, and thank you, Mr. Sauer. The next on the agenda is the NCACC conference voting delegate designation, County Manager Scott Sauer, briefed the board. And before he speaks, Madam Clerk, I think all the commissioners are registered for that conference. All the commissioners are registered to attend this conference in August, so.
Yes.
But only one member can vote. It's one vote per county. So we will need to have the clerk notify the association that there has been a public vote by the governing body to identify your voting delegate. So we're asking that y'all select your voting delegate this evening.
I make a motion that we appoint our chair.
I respectfully decline. And not that I can't do it, but your chair is, was the spokesperson voting last year. So I thank you for your confidence in me, but I'm going to nominate Vice Chair Jonathan Crater. Don't look at me like that.
He's just saying yes or no on some things.
Yes.
I'll help, I will get you ready. I'll be the author in case something happens, you know how your work is.
Yeah.
Is that sufficient, Mr. Sauer?
I do think y'all have to vote.
Okay, let's all vote. I make the motion that we select Vice Chair Jonathan Crater as the delegate to vote on behalf of Gates County.
Second.
And properly second. All in favor?
Aye.
I didn't hear you, Jonathan.
Aye.
County manager reporting updates. We're just about done, y'all, just hold on. County manager reports and updates.
Just a couple of items. Number one, on July 12th, I had an opportunity to meet with the Firefighters Association at the Yore Fire Station and heard a report that was offered by our 911 leadership, Dawn Abbott, the director and her supervisors. And they are encouraging all of our local fire departments to work with them in a cohesive and coordinated manner to realign the radio call sign numbering system for each of the fire stations, each of the fire trucks, and the individual firefighters, so that they can more clearly keep up when there are multiple events. And it was brought out at the meeting that this is also part of a national standard, the National Incident Management System, which will help the county in the event that we were to have a disaster and need to be declared a federal disaster area by FEMA to qualify for reimbursement from the federal government. But it was our 911 team who talked about the challenges they have, sometimes deciphering the call numbers, because presently, all the firefighters use a number that starts with the number eight. And they want to try to distinguish individually by fire station, and actually by fire chief, by assistant chief, and then the other members. But they gave an excellent presentation, it was well-received, and we hope that there will be further discussions with the fire association. They also, the fire chiefs collectively brought some concerns, I think for me, as the board's representative, as manager, to remind us that they're very interested in the fire hydrant replacement. And I mentioned to the board that that was funded and approved in the budget, and we will be working on that. And I've also asked that Brad and his staff coordinate with the Firefighters Association to make sure that his list matches the list that the fire chiefs have identified, because there could be situations where maybe one is not on the other group's list. But we want to be very thorough and attentive, especially for those hydrants that could impact the ratings for the various fire departments, that ultimately impacts and possibly lowers the insurance for homeowners. They also reminded us that we really need to get moving on our road sign replacement. That money is in the budget. Mr. Tutwaller is already working on that in emergency management. The Firefighters Association is looking aggressively at some grant money for a fire tower training apparatus to be placed in the county. They've got lots of different ideas for that, including the collaborative instruction and training through the College of the Albemarle, as our community college partner. And as they look forward into the future for future budgets, they have on their discussion list a review of the legislation that enables Gates County to have its unique fire service household charge. There may be some interest in seeing that legislation adjusted, so that that number could change at some point in the future. But it was a really, really positive experience. Second on my list, we have an IT director starting July 31st. It was a team exercise to assist Mr. Robertson, because this individual will be working in the finance department to help support Warren and all of the varying needs across the county. And he was assisted by, the interview team consisted of Lisa Cherry, Willie Smith, Chris Hill at the tax office. We wanted to capture as much information as we could before he got away from us, Brad Arnold, and of course, William. And this gentleman's name is Scott Pierce, and he will be leaving his post of a little over 20 years from Bertie County, and wants to come join the Gates County team. He's heard there's really some, but we went through all of the applications and he was really excited to come over here and talk with our folks. So he'll start July 31st.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Sauer. Mr. Roundtree?
Yes, I have my Trillium Health Services Report. The North Carolina House originally decided 15 million reduction for the Trillium single stream funds. Recently, the North Carolina Senate is also planning to reduce Trillium allocations with an expectation to replace the funds with fund balance. And Trillium, we are now trying to lobby the House and the Senate, trying to persuade them not to go to shroud, because by using the general fund, that's going to put it at a disadvantage. Also, Trillium will be starting our Victory Junction Trillium Family Weekend. Victory Junction was started by NASCAR legend, Richard Petty's family, and serves children with all types of complex needs. Trillium members can attend for a fun-filled weekend. This is where the kids can have access to different things and also services provided by Trillium in conjunction with enjoying a nice weekend at the Pettys' Victory Junction. Trillium will be hosting community-based summits. The summit will be based on awareness months such as Suicide Prevention for the month of September, Latino Hispanic Health Summit in October, and Native American Summit in November. The summits include virus behavior and physical health topics, such as diabetes, child abuse prevention, and lung cancer. In November, presentations will be focused on also diabetes, substance abuse, and breast cancer. Also, for the Albemarle Regional Health Service, on July 25th, from 1:00 p.m. to 3:00 p.m., Albemarle Regional Health Services will be providing a tour. It's going to be located at the Department of Social Services in Gatesville. And anyone that's interested can attend to find out the services that Albemarle Regional Health Services provide. And that concludes my report.
Brad, can you give us that date again?
Yes. The date is July 25th, and the time, 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., located at Department of Social Services.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Mr. Crater?
All right. First of all, I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Ray Freeman, 54 years as a sworn officer. That's a lifetime achievement, and I wish you happy retirement and try not to make too much noise. Broadband, echo off of some of what Mr. Bright said, hopefully, I won't get in trouble by saying this, but I think we've made a little noise on the state level, trying to look out for the farmers. Wish we had caught it a little bit sooner, but appreciate Mr. Bright pointing that out to us, so we can get the ball rolling. So the next part of the broadband is cab, what they're calling the cab project funding, complete access to broadband program is what it is. And it's getting broadband to the areas that does not have internet. It's going to require a kind of match, and how that match is decided is of the AWPer funds that we received. And the AWPer fund range that we fall in is from 250,000 to 4 million, we received, I believe, 2,245,783. So that puts us in a 5% match range. So we had originally set aside, added an AWPer fund, 500,000 for matching funds of broadband, so it's looking like we're only going to have to do 200,000. So that's an extra, well, not say extra, no such thing as extra money. But there is funds allocated for broadband that hopefully, we will not have to use them all and we could direct them elsewhere, reallocate, I think is the proper word for it. Within the broadband range, the Affordable Connectivity Program, I believe all the providers will be offering this. And I'm not going to read all of it, but a household is eligible for the Affordable Connectivity Program, is the household income is at or below 200% of the federal private. Connectivity Program is the household income is at or below 200% of the federal property guidelines, or if a member of the household meets at least one of the criteria. And I will name off a few. Veterans, survivor benefits, social services, people that are using the WIC program, Lifeline. And there's a numerous amount of people, participants in reduced lunch prices for the school system and everything. So several ways you can do it. You can go online to, I believe, the oldest thing. I've got a couple of them up here on before I said yesterday. Getinternet.gov to submit an application. You can print it out, or you can email it. Contact your preferred provider. Discount can be applied straightly to the bill. But whatever provider, if you meet within, fall within this criteria, is you can have up to a $30 a month discount on your internet services. And there's so many other things, but that would be something to check in, for everybody checking into, and I encourage everybody to sign up for it that's eligible for it. We're heading in the right direction on broadband. I missed a meeting. I hate that I missed it, but I did get the PowerPoint and reviewed over it, and Madam Chair here has updated me on some hot topic items. But we got a task force, so we're headed to game. We are headed to game. We're heading in the right direction. If I leave anything out, please add in. We have a PCG board meeting on the 26th. Is that correct, Ms. Hoffler?
Yes.
26th in Elizabeth City. So we're looking at different things to help the county out on with the landfill. Also, I would like to encourage people on the trash. I know I won't beat Ms. Hoffler to it this time. It is very important to separate our trash because we get charged for it. And it's a lot more than what I ever imagined in scrap metal. If you take your scrap metal to the facility, please make sure it goes in the dumpster. That offsets our cost of what we got to pay. So if we sell $30,000 worth of scrap metal, that's $30,000 worth of taxes that we can reallocate somewhere else. So same goes with trash, separating trash, yard waste, wood, metal, glass. Everything is a charge for it. We pay more per tonnage if it's mixed together. So if we can all just do our little part, it will go a long ways. And some facilities have more scrap metal than others for some reason, so we're keeping an eye on those things because it's taxpayers' dollars. Taxpayers' dollars is what it all boils down to. But thank you for all the hard work that all the county employees are doing. It does not go unnoticed. And hopefully, we're heading in the right direction with the Sheriff's Department with some new vehicles. I'm looking forward to seeing the guys ride around in style. Most important, one of the, well, what the board's obligated to do is for public health and safety. And the Sheriff's Department was one of the first starts, and we got to keep them safe at the same time. So appreciate everything the Sheriff's Department does, and appreciate everybody that comes out and joins us tonight. Thank you all.
Ms. Hoffler?
Okay, I'm going to stick to tourism tonight. Oh, most of the time. And July was a big month. That was the kind of the summation of the North Carolina Rural Tourism Recovery Program during big and small towns in North Carolina. The roll out has started in the mountains and then the P-Mon. And on July 7th, it rolled out here, oh, well, from June 21st to August 20th, it was the inner banks, and that included Gates County along with Chauan, Hurford, Martin, Brooklyn, Stearl, and Washington. And it is a promotion to encourage people to visit rural areas with for tourism. On July 7th, in Eaton and Barkerhome, there was a live chat day. The State Director of Tourism Whit Tuttle was here, and he gave 29 interviews that day to radio stations, TV stations across this country. And I have a list of the people that he talked to. The only ones that are close here were the two stations in Norfolk, but they have people from Cleveland, Cincinnati, Green Bay, Jacksonville, Roanoke, Charleston, Miami, St. Louis that would appear. And Warren, I believe you have a visual of something that would, didn't, I mean, wouldn't have been in the chat, but it will, it's online. This is a map of the region, the inner banks that they're talking about, and as you can see, two places are indicated from Gates County, Studio 32, Merchants Mill Pond, of course, being the largest attraction. But they encourage, if you go to the website, it's more information about different things here in the county. So that is one thing. If you'll give me my old visual. This is a visual that was on the back of that sheet. The sheet looks like this. And if you can see of this nine places that are mentioned, there is Merchants Mill Pond, of course, is one of the nine, and Studio 32 as well. And that has gone out all across the state, all across with these TV and radio stations as well. So, you know, we're trying to get that name out, get Gates County known across the state. It's a place to come visit, and we do have a lot of unique things here that would attract people. And just to say that, this week I got a phone call from the tourist, Visit North Carolina Tourism Specialist, Kathy Pritchard, I believe her's name is. And we had a nice chat, and she said she was interested in helping us promote Gates County. I said, "Well, that's great." I said, "Would you like to come?" She said, "Sure, I'd love to get out of Raleigh," and I'm coming. So she will be here in August to visit. And one of the things, as we talked about, and I said, "Well, you know, we are a county with limited funds to promote tourism or promote anything like that." She said, "That's why I'm here. I'm going to help you. There are a lot of ways, free things you can get involved with, things that can help you get your message right there without costing." So I'm looking forward to hearing that with the committee. And so, and always to promote our county across the state. Also, I want to take, and we try, we're working together with the Chamber, and y'all know that they took, did a wonderful job with this Welcome Resource Guide to Gates County. To get these in the...
Welcome Centers?
Yeah, the Welcome and Centers, you had to go through a process. You just can't walk in and say, "Put this on your rack." You had to get permission from the state. And the Chamber, we got Sarah Hill, who's a county resident, who is the director at the Welcome and Center on the Dusel Swamp. She helped us, helped the Chamber, and now these are in at the Dusel Swamp Welcome and Center. And they're also looking at to put the one at Columbia, that as you're going up toward the beach, if you take Columbia Way. So we appreciate, you know, the collaboration with the Chamber, working to get things to promote the county. Also, I have another bit. I told you I would go offline for, this is Elaine Marshall, who's Secretary of State. She is starting a Rural Rise North Carolina Resources for Innovators, Startup, and Entrepreneurs. They are going to provide roadmap for resources. This is something that is free to, for people who are interested in starting a business, entrepreneurs, or innovators. And they have a website that you can go on, and she's looking at ways to help businesses locate in rural areas. And this is a free service. It is not a, it doesn't cost. So I'm going to pass this down to the county manager and economic developer. They can share this information.
Okay.
And that is my report. I didn't go too far off.
No, you didn't. Thank you, Ms. Hoffler. For my updates, I received a letter from the Superintendent of Schools, who's currently in, I think he's in Raleigh attending a meeting, a finance meeting, and he wanted this read out to the members of the board and the citizens. It's addressed to Dr. Anthony Riddick, Chair, Gates County Board of Commissioners, Mr. Scott Sauer, Gates County Manager, Mr. Brian Roundtree, Mr. Jonathan Crata, Ms. Emily Truman, and Ms. Linda Hoffler, Commissioners, and it reads, "Dear Dr. Riddick, Mr. Sauer, and Commissioners, the Board of Education and I would like to express our utmost gratitude and appreciation for your recent decision to allocate additional funding to support our local school system. As the Superintendent of the School District and an advocate for quality education, I cannot emphasize enough how significant this decision was for the present and future of our school community. On June 28, 2023, the Gates County Board of Education held a special call meeting for the end-of-year budget closeout along with other agenda items. With the additional funding provided by the county commissioners in the sum of $828,000, we have alleviated many funding needs as well as replenishing our fund balance account. At the meeting, the Board of Education approved, among other things, the following for the 2023-2024 school year. Classified staff will maintain a 40-hour-per-week work schedule, 12-month contracts for the athletic director and head football coach. Athletic directors' stipend increased to the equivalent of stipends throughout the state. Since the expenses listed above are recurring and the additional funds from you were a one-time allocation, we will make adjustments to the budget throughout the 2023-2024 school year to incorporate the expenses into the recurring budget. We are also anticipating that the General Assembly will increase small schools' funding for the 2023-2024 school year and should note this funding amount when the state budget is approved in the near future. Again, the Board of Education and I would like to thank you for your profound support and dedication to providing for our school district. Your decision to allocate additional funding is a testament to your genuine concern for our youth education and their future. We look forward to collaborating with you on the budget and future projects in the years to come. Please do not hesitate to reach out to me if there is any, if there is any way I can support or assist you in your endeavors. Wishing you continued success in your crucial roles as county leaders. Sincerely, Dr. Barry Williams, Superintendent of Gates County Schools." And I know he's watching because he told me he would be. Ms. Truman is not here. I talked, I spoke with her this afternoon when she called me, and I shared with her a chart, and I'm passing these out to the Commissioners. I think the county manager and Mr. Sauer have that same chart. But if you look in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners newsletter, you'll find a report about the allocations for all 100 counties in North Carolina, what their allocations are. When I put in Gates and clicked on it, it gave me this beautiful chart. And on this chart, it shows that last year we received $66,433, and we will receive in this fiscal year, '23, '24, $126,629. And it has a, that's a payout over 18 years, because it's an 18-year payout. So in total, in 18 years, it'll be $925,961 to Gates County. Now, this is an estimate, and probably will go up because they're still filing, not filing, suing. Is that the right term? They're still suing pharmaceuticals. So in other words, it's a million-dollar payout, and we must start spending this money. So when I was talking to Ms. Truman, I was typing up something, so I typed up what I'm going to read you, and she has it. And this is what, it's expectation based on a memorandum of understanding and what we must do in this county for making sure that we're spending this money appropriately and that we spend the money. Bullet one, there are restrictions and regulations on the ways in which settlement money can be used, which is part of the need for a committee of stakeholders to meet and recommend expenditures to the Board of Commissioners and the county manager. Bullet two, the committee should involve representatives from local leaders, first responders, law enforcement, social services, EMS, and public school system, and there may be others. The stakeholders would be in the best position to help guide the spending, to make the biggest impact and save the most lives possible, not to mention prevent opioid abuse by possibly implementing strategies around education, prevention, and intervention. Since the state funding model is an 18-year payment, '22 through '23, totaling $925,961, this effort should be a strategic initiative leading to a multi-year strategic plan. Once submitted, the recommendations will be reviewed, and if a consensus is reached by the committee, then a public hearing will be scheduled for citizen input. Ms. Truman received this this afternoon. She received the chart this afternoon. I just wanted to let people know and everyone else know, we do have opiate money in the bank. Right now, we're getting more. The county attorney sent the last MOU in a couple of months, two or three months ago for this next payment. So when I talked to Ms. Truman, she understands that it's time to get the committee together. She said she have had interest of some people. So I'm saying publicly on YouTube and in this meeting room, please help create a strategic plan to expend this money. Contact Ms. Truman. She's awaiting your call to serve on the committee, especially the first responders, EMS, law enforcement, DSS, and others, and just plain citizens that want to serve on this committee, and put together a draft or strategic plan for expending this money. We must spend the funds responsibly, and they're tracking how the money's being spent, and they know that you're not spending the money. We don't have a lot of money. The money is allocated by the number of residents in the county. We have 10,300-plus or minus residents in this county, and it's also based on the drug stats in this county. Now, we're very fortunate. We're not like many counties who have a very bad drug situation in these counties, and we're thankful for law enforcement, what they do as far as trying to keep it out of here and doing what they're supposed to do. But we must spend the money, and whatever the committee comes back with a recommendation to the county manager and the board, we're going to support them, but we need to start spending the money. So Ms. Truman is asking that if you would like to serve on the committee, to please contact her and help her out. She's the liaison, just like, we all have committees. That's her committee, and we're looking forward, within 30 days, to hear from a committee that they have formed a committee and that they're ready to work. Some counties got millions of dollars because they're larger and they have a drug problem. And we have a drug problem too, but it's not like that. And we're thankful, knock on wood, as is wood, knock on wood, and we want to keep it that way, but we need to put something into marketing, education, intervention, and prevention in this county because the money is there, and we must spend it. So we're looking forward to that. Commissioners, you receive, I think, the clerk sends it to me, I think she sent it to the Jones Street Journal. Please start looking at that because the General Assembly is going to take problems at Labor Day to get a budget, so it's not imminent. Mr. Steinberg let us know through a letter to the county manager and myself, he's our lobbyist, that he's spoken to Phil Berger, and it's not looking good as far as getting the budget anytime soon. Hopefully, they will, but we know that the school system is waiting and other people are waiting for the budget. We are too, to hear about the appropriations that we requested. So please start reading this and take note, and go to the Association newsletter and click on different subsections. You'll find things like opiate and everything. It's in there. As far as transparency, this board is more transparent than I've ever seen it. We don't hide anything. We have phases. We have plans. We have people working in conjunction with us, and we release facts. We don't release things because people want it. When we're ready to release something, we will. Now, we did have a meeting to get ready for the release. Lisa Cherry is here. We met with Summit about the survey. They're getting it ready. Nobody is making anything up. And when they get it ready and formatted for release, you will see it, not a minute before. We didn't do the survey. We didn't write the survey. The survey is the survey. So when they get it ready, and that should be imminent, because we had a meeting with them last week, and they are putting together the survey in a format that's presentable and professional and that people can understand. Okay? I'm not going to speak to the Board of Election Comments. That's not my purview or this board. That is the chair's decision. Mr. Anthony Sommers, he's the Chair of the Democratic Party by statute. He has things he can do and he will do. So we're not going to get into the political game. That's not what we're going to do as a committee. That's not what we're going to do as Commissioners. We govern. We govern. And Mr. Campbell, can you come up and speak to the National Night Out? I want to make sure that gets on in minutes, too, to encourage people to come out to that. That's very important as well.
The National Night Out will again be August the 1st, it'll be first Tuesday night. I'm thinking the time will somewhere around 6:00, I believe, but we're going to have, my crew will be there. We'll have a golf cart and do some stuff like we did last year with impairment goggles and that kind of stuff. So encourage everybody to come, and we will have some stuff to give away, maybe not as much as last year, but we do always have some giveaway stuff. You get to meet all my guys, talk to them. We're regular guys and girls, nothing special, but we have a job to do, and it is becoming more difficult as we go along. And I'm thankful for this time because there's a lot of things I could talk about, but everybody's ready to go home. But I'll call volume. I'll call volume. I get a printout of that every month from our 911. That includes everything that law enforcement is involved in, from a cat up a tree to a domestic violence call. It's there. When I was a deputy a few years back, our call volume was 200, 300 calls a month. Our call volume the last few months had been around between 600 and 700 calls. We are busy, and a lot of these calls are handled with one or two deputies. So we are busy. We are busy. The drug problem that you mentioned, we have had multiple overdoses in the last few weeks. Multiple. We just had one today. Individual overdose in the back of her mother's car. Got her back, EMS got her back with North Carolina. It's here. It's here. And I think to start in the middle school with handouts and get right into the high school with more handouts, we can spend the money with the information given to these people. Also, on our trash collection and sites, we had an incident last week where trash was dumped, not dumped, but placed at the site in Gates. We collected some, found out who it was, tried to make contact with them, gave them the opportunity to come and move it. They chose not to. So we showed up at their door with a warrant, and they were arrested and brought to the courthouse. So we're watching that, too.
I think we asked, Mr. Sauer, we asked it, you know, when you was here the last time, that we wanted you on the agenda sometimes, maybe not every meeting, but just to give a synopsis of what's going on in law enforcement in Gates County, especially those incidences such as you just said. So the citizens understand that we do have a challenge, a problem, but it's not as, it, one death or one overdose is one too many. Any incident of such things that is one too many, and they need to understand that we all have to work together. It's got to be a community effort with the law enforcement and first responders, because we're going to resolve some of these issues in our communities. So you don't have to come every month, you know, but get with Mr. Sauer, and we'll put you on the agenda so you can stand and...
And we do try to put stuff on Facebook, some stuff we don't and we can't, but stuff that we can and we think that citizens would be, you know, interested in seeing, but that's a tidbit of what we do every day.
And I appreciate, I've seen some of your posts, but there are too many, there's so many that don't go to Facebook or social media, and so they don't see it or just heard, filtered through someone else. I think it would be more impactful if you, as the sheriff, would come every so often, I'm not saying every month, like you shared with me during June 10th, you rode up on your little electric bicycle, and you told me about the drugs and everything in the county, and I listened. And that's why I'm bringing this now. We need to get that committee up and running. We need to get that money spent, and I want your people or a representative on this committee, along with the others, like I just said, to help Commissioner Truman out so we can get some intervention into middle school, just like you said, or other places. And we thank, on behalf of the Commissioners, we thank you for what you do.
Well, I appreciate it, and I've got a grand opportunity coming up to go to Myrtle Beach and speak on an interview panel with three other sheriffs, the sheriff's role in school safety. And I'll be doing that this weekend, as a matter of fact. So it was four sheriffs chosen out of the state, and I was one of those, so it's a big honor to be able to do that.
Okay. All right, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Well, with that said, I've asked for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.